The time now is 7:00 PM. I will now call this meeting to order. At this time, I please ask everyone to silence your cellphones or any other electronic device. Your greeters tonight at the door are Fire Chief Howard Bailey and Police Captain Chris Ruse. Recording Secretary Ashley Clements. Assistant City Clerk Taylor Lockhart. Deputy Mayor, Zone One Commissioner Lori Talland.
Good evening, everyone. Glad you're here.
Zone Two Commissioner Travis Sargent.
Good evening, welcome.
Zone Three Commissioner Kristen Deaton stepped out, but she will be back and will reflect on the record when she does step back in. Zone Four Commissioner Howard Brierley.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome.
City Manager Joyce Shanahan. Assistant City Manager Claire Whitley. And we have Sean Fettley sitting in the front row there. Assistant City Attorney Randy Hayes. And in the far corner over there, we have Police Chief Jesse Godfrey. Fire Chief Howard Bailey. And I am Mayor Jason Leslie. This time, I would like to call on Chaplain Edgar Restrepo to do the invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
I would like to share a passage from Micah 6:8. "O people, the Lord has told you what is good and what requires of you to do justice, love mercy, and walk humbly with your God." These timeless words from the book of Micah offer a beautiful frame for public service. Regardless of personal background, the call is to do justly, to love mercy and walk humbly is a deeply beautiful thing in the civic life. To strive for fairness in every policy, protecting the dignity of each resident and ensuring that there is no voice that goes unheard. To lead with compassion, to remember that behind every issue is a human story. To let God guide us when the answers are complex, and to be humble when entrusted with the welfare of others. May these principles grant us today. If you feel comfortable, please join me as I pray. Mighty God, please help us today. Guide us as we, with integrity and fairness, make decisions. Give us the courage to do what is right, choosing kindness, listening deeply, and lifting up those who are vulnerable, recognizing that we are part of something larger than ourselves, and that true leadership begins with service. May the decisions made here today reflect these values and bring us about peace, unity, and hope for all who are, who call this place home. In your name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. Moving on to the presentation and proclamation section agenda. Today, we have one presentation. I'd like to invite Kevin Hayden from the Florida Department of Transportation to present.
Good evening. How are you?
Good evening. How are you?
So my name is Kevin Hayden, and actually, I also have Ed Kestery here with me. We're both with FDOT. And we just want to present to you tonight with some updates for our construction projects. There we go. All right, so we have two projects in construction in the city of Ormond Beach. We have State Road 40 from US 1 to A1A. And then, we also have A1A from State Road 40 up to Roberta Road. And I'm going to go a little more in-depth on those two projects. And then, I'll just touch on the two nearby projects, which are A1A from US 92 to Millsap Road. That's in the city of Daytona Beach. However, the very northern piece of that actually does overlap into the city of Ormond Beach. And then, we also have the A1A Secant Wall Project, which is actually two walls, but we'll talk about the south wall, really, because that's in Ormond by the Sea. All right, the first project, State Road 40, again, that's from US 1, as you can see on the map up there. US 1 to A1A. We're not really doing anything with the bridge itself over the Halifax River. I think the theme of all these projects I'm going to talk about tonight is safety. So on the State Road 40 project, some of the features that we're constructing out there is, I'll start off with the traffic calming features, where we're going to narrow the lanes. We're adding bulbouts, which are those concrete islands that you see on the side of the road there. And also slight curves. We also call them chicanes. We're going to reduce the speed limit from 35 miles per hour to 30 miles per hour. And then, there's, on this project, we have three pedestrian crossings. Two of them are existing, and then, one of them is a new crossing. The, all three are going to have what we call PHBs. Those are pedestrian hybrid beacons. Those are overhead signals for the vehicles to stop so that pedestrians can cross. And two of these crossings, one of the existing, and the new crossing will be raised crosswalks. Also, we'll have two masterarm signal poles, so those will replace what you traditionally have the span wires, but these will be the nicer-looking poles that the signals will be mounted on. And then, last, we'll be resurfacing the roadway. I'm going to hand it over to Ed to kind of talk about some of these features.
Thank you, Kevin. Okay, so let's begin. We'll continue on with the State Road 40 project. So as you can see here, what we have done throughout the corridor, so it goes from US 1, crosses a bridge, and goes to A1A. Some of the existing areas that were striped out, gored out, what we have done to help improve safety in slow speeds, if we've constructed some of these raised features, kind of islands within those gored areas, we didn't really add any new ones, so we've done that. There was also some small sections of intermittent bike lanes along the corridor, and sometimes that is confusing for the bicyclists, so those were removed. And as we did that, it gave us room to help narrow the lanes. We provided some lane deflection, chicaning. It kind of helps give some curvature to the roadway to help also reduce speeds. One of the issues, I know we've had some concerns about this when we've constructed some of these elements, working with our contractors, sometimes they do things a little bit out of sequence, as these projects are. These are typically resurfacing projects, but we are doing a lot of different safety elements along with these projects, and these are fairly new for us. They're quite a bit different from what we typically have done in the past. And as such, our contractors, too, they've, you know, kind of have some growing pains with them. And I know we've had some concerns with how these things were constructed and striping, but we've worked through the issues with, do that with the contractor. We've identified some best practices, things we're going to do moving forward that will help them get these things in the right sequence and construct them all within one operation. So when the lanes close at night, they construct this, the motors come out in the daytime and see this, things will look normal. So we think those issues should be resolved. Just to go a little bit more in-depth about the pedestrian hybrid beacon. So along the corridor, there are just three that we're installing. One is at the current location, where the crossing is at Washington Street there. We're upgrading that one, kind of changing how the signal or the crosswalk moves across the roadway there. That will, that will be an at-grade crossing. We are upgrading the one near Ormond Garage there, a little bit further to the east. That will be a raised crossing. So it's basically staying in the same locations. We're slightly shifting it a little bit, just due to drainage and other issues, but it's fairly pretty much in the same location. And then, the third location is across the bridge on the east, on the beach side, right near the strip mall area there. We're going to provide a crossing. That will be a raised crossing as well. All three crossings will have in-road lighting and pedestrian lighting as well. And as Kevin mentioned, these types of signals, they operate pretty much like a regular traffic signal. So the motors will get a red signal to stop, and then, a green signal when it's safe for them to move forward after the pedestrians have crossed. And as they do that, pedestrians, they come up, they push a button. It takes a few seconds. It cycles through, just like a normal signal, yellow, red, then green for the pedestrian, I mean, red for the cars to stop. That gives the pedestrians a signal to cross, and then, once they're crossed, then it turns green. Okay. Back over to Kevin.
All right. The next thread we're going to talk about is State Road A1A from 40, Granada, up to Roberta Road. Very similar features that we're adding to this project. Again, we're traffic calming features, lanes are narrowed, we're adding bulbouts and slight curves, the chicanes. Again, we're going to reduce the speed limit from 35 miles per hour to 30. On this project, we're actually going to have 13 new pedestrian mid-block crossings. And instead of having the PHB, which is that overhead signal, these will have the rapid rectangular flashing beacons, which is a mouthful to say. We also call them RRFBs, which isn't much easier. And then, also, four of those will be raised pedestrian crosswalks as well. In addition to that, we're going to have three speed tables, which are similar to the raised pedestrian crosswalks, except there's no pedestrian crossing. Those are just there to help slow the vehicles down. And on this project, we're installing a multi-use path. And last, also, we're going to resurface the roadway. And Ed's going to talk about the raised pedestrian crosswalk here.
Yeah, so as Kevin mentioned, there's four raised crossings here, and they are the RRFB type. And pretty much, those act kind of like on-demand. So the pedestrian will press the button, the lights will flash, they will look, you know, left, right, make sure motors have acknowledged them. Once they stop, then they cross the road. It also allows motors, once pedestrians have crossed their side of the road, they can continue on. So that operates a little bit differently than pedestrian hybrid beacon, the PHB. It's more like an on-demand signal. But again, these, all, all these crossings, whether they're raised or at-grade, they'll have in-road lighting to kind of draw attention from the cars as they approach the crosswalk, and it will have pedestrian lighting as well.
So during the construction of this project, we have three detours. One of them, we've already completed. That was down, trying to remember, Neptune Road. That was Phase 1, so I'm not showing that up here only because we've already completed it. Right now, we're in the Phase 2 detour, our current detour, and that's down Amston Road. That takes you to Halifax, and then, you'll go south on Halifax to Granada, and then, you can either go back to A1A, or you can go west to the mainland. At the intersection of Amston and Halifax, we've installed a temporary four-way stop. I just wanted to emphasize that that is temporary. As soon as we're done with the detour, we'll remove the stop signs there. And we also have a flagman there that is helping direct traffic through that intersection, especially if it gets backed up. Then, we'll move on to the Phase 3 detour. So when Phase 2 completes, we're thinking around early July, and that's when we'll move to the Phase 3 detour. On the Phase 3 detour, the vehicles will take Stanish over to Halifax and then continue south to Granada. And I don't have it up there, but we're thinking that the Phase 3 detour will probably be finished around mid-September. All right.
Okay. Onto the next slide. So I'm not going to cover every bullet on this slide, but there are two main concerns there. One is landscaping and tree removal, and the other is this multi-use path, the shared-use path. So let's address the landscaping first. So as we come in and do these projects, many times, you have to remove landscaping and replace it. So our goal is to save as many trees as possible, and a lot of them are affected where we are putting the multi-use trail. And so our goal is, like I said, we're going to protect as many trees as possible. Current, typically, what happens in a project like this, we will come back after construction is done and do a landscape contract. The reason we do that is because if we do it that way, we get a longer warranty period. We get a two-year period, as opposed to a one-year period if we do it with the construction contract. So that is something, too, that we're going to evaluate, too, is coming back and doing that. The shared-use path, the multi-use path. So we did receive some community feedback and some concerns over the material type that was used, and also, the elevation of the trail itself in certain locations appeared to be high. So we went back with our engineer of record. We addressed some of those concerns. They went back through the data they have, and what they found is there was some errors in the survey data that they received, which resulted in the trail being high. So they are in the process now, should be coming in very shortly, to revise the plans for those particular areas, send that back to the contractor. He'll take that out, regrade it, and put it at the proper elevation. So you won't notice that kind of really high trail as you see now. So that will be taken out. Along with that, you know, we received the concerns about asphalt as opposed to concrete. So this would be the opportune time to, if we're going to change material, to do it. So we are doing that. So just as luck would have it, you know, and I'm sure you guys go through the same type of situation, when you get to the end of the year, is when, usually, the beginning of fiscal year, everyone's trying to conserve budget. The end of the year, there's always excess. So we did contact our central office counterparts. They did have, and these are specialized trail funds that are used to construct this trail. It helps us maximize our resurfacing dollars. They did have extra funds, so we got with them. We told them what we needed to make the conversion to concrete. It's already been programmed. The plan revision is in the works, and that will be happening. So like I said, just a short period of time, the contractor's got to go back, remove what he's installed, the asphalt, take the base material back down to the proper elevation. And we're working out with the contractor. We've already got quotes from him, so it actually came in much better than we anticipated. So I think we're all pretty happy with that, and we're moving forward with concrete, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody in the commission have any questions? I'm pretty sure we do.
Just a quick question. I'm sorry. Just a quick question. Two things, I guess, and it gets back to Granada Boulevard. One, was that originally supposed to be a resurfacing project as well?
Yes, these are all resurfacing projects, and--
I thought it was.
Yes, so, and when we're trying to address safety, the time to do it is when you're there resurfacing. We can't come back and do it later. It does result in tearing up the asphalt in many cases. It doesn't look the same, so--
Right, I know you're doing the concrete, or the banding for the crosswalks and that type of stuff as well, the sidewalk stuff. The medians, and we've had a lot of comments about the medians with the, I guess you call them, it's not necessarily a bulbout, but where you have the concrete cup for the median for the pedestrian refuge, then you have the extended median out into the intersection. We get a lot of phone calls about that, a lot of, it's hard for a lot of vehicles towing trailers to negotiate that. Any thoughts? I know they've removed a couple. They've removed the one down here at the foot of the bridge. You know, I don't know. To me personally, I don't know if it's a real safety issue for pedestrians to be standing there when vehicles are turning, especially if they can't negotiate what's there. I don't want, you know, pedestrians to be hit. Any thoughts on that?
Are you referring to like the medians, the ones like in the center of the roadway?
Right. The concrete medians that come out. They extended those. And I know why they did it. They did it for pedestrian safety, but if a pedestrian gets caught there, folks are turning, I mean, they're already clipping those, the ends of those medians. I just don't think the pedestrians will be very safe there.
Right. Well, I mean, just looking at it from a design perspective, that is one reason why they kind of put them out, to make people make a wider turn to stay away from pedestrians and to go slower as they're making those turns. But we can certainly look at that and evaluate those. And when we go through this design process, when they're analyzing turn movements, there's a computer program we use to design our projects, and it's based off survey data. And they do use larger trailers and trucks to make those turning movements, to make sure they can. Now, I understand, you know, some people, they're just used to them not being there, and it takes a while to adjust, but it's definitely something we can go back and look at, and if it makes sense, we can look at it. If it seems like it's kind of a little bit too far out there, we can adjust those, just like you said, like the one at the bridge.
My last question is, and I know in talking to folks and actually, you know, utilizing the bridge, pedestrians, you know, and this is not for this, but maybe future consideration. The current pedestrian facilities we have on our bridge are narrow. And you have light posts, the decorative lamp posts in that walkway. Has there ever been any thought given to bringing that barrier wall out into the bike lane and then making that a multi-use facility?
Well, it just so happens, my previous job here at the department before this, I was the structures maintenance engineer. So what that entails is I was in charge of all the bridges and master, any structure within the nine counties of the district. So basically, that position, what I did is, we inspected all the bridges. So I was out here many nights, because we do that night. And we also do repair projects. So as we do the inspection, if we find an issue, we design a repair plan. That particular issue did come up, and we looked at it, and I think there were some issues with actually widening that bridge. I think when we looked at it, if you recall, the light post in the middle barrier came down, I think it might have been heard by Matthew, and we replaced those. And that was a concern at that time we were asked to look at, and I think there were some issues--
Well, I'm not necessarily talking about widening the bridge itself, just those barrier walls, bringing them where the bike lane is, put them where the bike lane is, and then you'd have a wider pedestrian facility.
Right. So if I recall where the last beam is on the outside there, the overhang in that beam can only be so far unless you add another beam line. I think that was the concern there.
Got you. Thank you. Thank you.
Lori?
Thank you. So Harold, thank you for bringing that up. I mean, one of, one of my goals, and maybe if you can relook at this, I would appreciate that, is to connect our trails, you know, with the bike pedestrian trail. And our bridge is one of the biggest obstacles for that. And if there is some way that you can look at maybe moving that concrete over and using it more of a multi-use trail, I'd appreciate it. Or maybe in your engineering, you can figure out something else. That's not what I was going to say originally, but I needed to piggyback on that. The grind crosswalk, the crosswalk downtown, is that going to be as straightforward? Is that going to be one of those that we have now where you walk and you kind of jig-jag?
I'll defer that to Kevin, but I believe it is, it was more of a zigzag crossing, as you say. It's still going to, my understanding, it's still going to be like that, but the distance isn't going to be as much. It's going to be a smaller transition from one side to the other.
It looks like the new center portion is still a zigzag.
Still the zigzag? What's the reason for that? I'm just curious. I mean, because people don't zigzag. I mean, if you're walking, you go, most people just kind of go straight across. I don't know. I'm just throwing that out there.
I think, well, with the concern, so the way there's, the crossing was originally constructed, I think there was a concern, because it wasn't, there was no signalization there. Well, there was a RFE. I think they were concerned that when someone crosses, they could get into a position where they can't cross both sides before the flashing RFB goes away. I mean, now, we're going to have a different type of signal. The issue is, and we did try to make it straight and adjust it, but there's issues with the driveway there at the garage and also the grind. Working with the property owners, there were some issues there, some difficulties, where we couldn't actually make it like we wanted without reconstructing it. And again, we could have done it. The property owners had concerns, so we tried to accommodate their concerns and kind of make it the best we could.
Appreciate that. And this is the most important thing. Thank you, thank you, thank you for listening to the residents and hearing what they were saying about the material for the multimodal path. Concrete definitely is what Ormond deserves, and I really appreciate that. And as my commissioners up here know, I'm a tree person, so anytime you can try to save a tree and plant back a nice native landscape, I'm all in. Thank you so much. So thank you so, so much for listening. Appreciate it.
Commissioner Sargent?
Thank you. Couple things. The beacons that flash like we have at Millsap over that area that we're going to have elsewhere, we really need to do education on these, because I think it's very confusing that you proceed with caution on a blinking red light. Very confusing. And I can't tell you how many cars back up on A1A, because it's very confusing. I'm surprised we haven't had more rear-end collisions there, but I just think education-wise, I know this is something new, but--
Sean, did you want to say something?
We will work with DOT on that. That's one of, one of the five I's, or five Es is to educate. DOT has a great presentation that they do, material to help people basically learn how to cross the street. I think the trooper Steve is involved in one of the, some of the videos, and so we will work with them to get all that and have Jen post it on, you know, our different social means and get it out there. But reaching out to our residents, reaching out to the hotels, that's a big one, to have our visitors who are new to the area, who maybe haven't seen these types of crosswalks, where they, where they've come from. Learn, reteaching people, look left, look right, look left again. It is just simple stuff that we will work on here, because as they show, as our friend showed, we've got 13 new crosswalks that are activated on the north pen. We've got eight on the south pen. The project in Daytona Beach adds more of those crosswalks. Going up into Ormond by the Sea, there's even more of those crosswalks. That's how we're going to have really effective ability to cross the street, is by having consistency from one community to the other. I've used Pinellas County as going back to when we started doing these talks of how to do it right. Going from Clearwater, south through the Gulf Beaches into St. Petersburg, they've got 83 or 85 of these, every 1,000 feet. That's what gets the consistency. So I really appreciate everything FDOT has done for us, and I appreciate them coming out tonight. They, we will meet with them next Wednesday. So if anybody has any concerns that they'd like to bring up further, get it to me. I'll be glad to be the conduit for that and to share with them. And again, I appreciate everything that they've done coming out here tonight and presenting, and certainly making, listening to our residents and listening to our concerns is the biggest part of our relationship here, so thank you.
I still have a couple more comments. The narrowed lanes, I'm going to wait until it's all complete and hopeful, it's, right, but last week, I got a text from a gentleman that was driving down, and car went by one of the chicanes, if you will, and knocked his mirror off his truck. Doing the speed limit, and I know it's just the markings, so hopefully, when it's all complete. I do worry about in front of the Ormond Art Museum, the one where now you have bicyclists riding towards the beach, and they have nowhere to go but into traffic. That's concerning to me. Thank you for changing the asphalt to concrete. That's huge. That's huge for our residents. Asphalt in a beach community with residents walking their dogs or coming home from the beach or whatever to walk on black asphalt in summer. I'm very pleased that we're, y'all are changing that to concrete. The sidewalks on the bridge, I can't tell you how many times my wife would come home when she would push the stroller. There is no room to push a stroller with those lights. I don't think widening it or anything, just moving those light poles to the outside, like every, we are the only bridge in Volusia County that have the lights in the sidewalk, and you can't push a double stroller going through there. It's just very difficult. And I heard nine months, 10 months, however long it was, my wife was pushing the strollers. Once again, thank you for listening to our residents, being a great partner with the city, and being here tonight. We really appreciate it. Thank you.
And I'll echo my colleagues here again on everything, and we really appreciate everything you guys do. But just going back to the blinking lights for just a quick second, you know, it used to be a yellow flashing light. You know, is there anything that you could say about the red blinking light that will put the community a little bit more at ease, and even us here at the DIAS, about the effectiveness of having the red blinking light versus the old style that they had, the old color?
I believe they still are that yellow amber color. The RFB is a rapid rectangular flashing beacon. Yeah, right. So the RFBs, yeah, they're still like that. They're the same color, they still blink, they're just like that. One thing we found is the in-road lighting, when it comes on, it does draw attention so the drivers see it, because sometimes, you're right, and I've seen it myself, I will go out there and walk these crosswalks just to see the driver behavior, and I'll press it, and I can make eye contact, and they aren't even looking at the light. But the in-road light definitely helps draw their attention to realize, hey, there's someone trying to cross the road. The other ones, the PHB, pedestrian hybrid beacons, those don't blink. They act just like a traffic signal. They do not blink at all. So there shouldn't be any confusion, and those are typically, it depends on the crossing and how many pedestrians you have. We do counsel on that, and also, speed limit is a factor of where we can and cannot use these. But they, they do not flash, so they're just like a traffic signal. There'll be a red solid signal for the cars to stop, and then, a green solid for them to go. And as they get the red solid ball, just like a traffic signal stop, the pedestrians will get the walk signal. So those will act just like a, like a regular signal.
Got you. Okay, well, any other questions? No? Seeing none, thank you. Thank you, really appreciate it. At this time, we'll hear from those of you who have signed a card to speak about any item which is not on the printed agenda for this meeting, including any items on the consent agenda. Each person will be given a total of three minutes. I have quite a bit of cards here, so I think what I'll do for time reasons is I'll call two names. I'll call the speaker, and then I'll just call somebody on deck, and if you want to sit in the front, I'll make it a little faster here. First one is Amber Boback, and we have Arthur Armstrong on deck. Hello, Amber.
Good evening, Mayor Leslie and Commission and staff. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight and--
to speak tonight, and thank you for your time, professionalism, and cooperation throughout the process of the Circle K proposal. I want to especially thank the city staff for having consistently communicated with clarity and respect, even when the topics at hand were complex and often contentious. You dedicate, your dedication to due process and your service to the residents of Orman Beach are generally appreciated. I also want to recognize the work of the planning board. While they did not make a formal recommendation on the project and question their willingness to consider potential changes to the land development code, particularly in regard to public safety and proximity of fuel stations to residential areas, is both encouraging and important. Their decision showed a real interest in preserving the long-term health and safety of our community. As for the recent approval of the Site Plan Review Committee, I want to speak from the heart. While I understand that the SPRC's role is largely administrative and governed by code compliance, it is deeply disheartening to see a project move forward that has generated such significant concern. The SPRC's approval through procedural, though procedural, does not fully reflect the voices of the residents who have expressed opposition, many of whom believe this project could negatively impact the safety, traffic, flooding, and quality of life of the neighborhood. This is not just about the project. It's about how we grow as a city, how we protect our neighbors, and how we balance development with the character and well-being of our community. I believe we can and should look harder at how our code aligns with modern realities and the values of our residents. Public safety must remain in the forefront of every planning decision, and I encourage you to support the planning board's interest in revisiting and possibly amending parts of the code to reflect the priority. Thank you again for your service and listening to the concerns of the community you serve.
Thank you, Amber. Arthur, and just for a second before you speak, I just want to get on the record here, which I didn't do before, is that we have Commissioner Deaton present, so I just wanted to put that on the record.
Thank you.
Arthur, and on deck, we have Mark Geistwhite.
Good evening, everyone. Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, Commissioners, appreciate the time to speak this evening. I'm asking to remove from the consent agenda, item number eight, letter K, from the city commissioners meeting of this evening, May 20th, 2025. Excuse me. There, at this point, there has really not been any input from the public to speak to the issues, what's going on over there at the airport, and of course, the potential for losing our golf course, which I, that's one of the reasons I'm here. I want to play golf there, again. I used to at one time. It was fun. You'd go through Bear Creek, through the back gate, and all the way up in your golf cart when you were visiting over there. Didn't even have to take a car. But now we don't have a golf cart, golf facility over there. We need that back. And with that, we have not had the impact, or you've not allowed us to have the impact in the community for maybe resolving some solutions over there that, to see what need there really is to expand that airport. We have right now, and I've been, Stephen Lecliter and myself, we've talked many, many times over different issues at the, over there that has gone on for years now. But one of the biggest things I can't understand, I was promised, promised, from members up here and others at the airport, that we will never see a larger jet in and out of that facility that is not or cannot accommodate the length of that runway. In other words, it needs more, actually, it needs more runway. We've got a Cessna 650-3, I think they call it. The head needs 1700 or 1600 feet stop unless it has no fuel or no individuals on the board, on board. What good is that? Some fool comes out of the sky, doesn't realize that, and it can happen. They're not gonna stop. That thing's gonna come right off the end. It's gonna go right into Bear Creek. That's where we'll end up being, because that's how close it is. And now you want to take down almost 200 acres of trees and bushes and stuff. For what? You can't extend that runway towards Bear Creek or, and some of the other locations. You just can't do it. You, that property, that 100 acres of property at Bear Creek, for instance, was a commercial piece of property, and the wisdom of the city took this commercial way and made it residential. So now we've got 664 homes in there that I can go out and have, I can walk to the airport in five minutes and get a cup of coffee. That's how close it is. And you've got Orman Lakes, which I live, that's my primary residence. I might as well be next to the airport. I can't even be in my pool without an airplane going over me 24/7, almost 24/7. I know it might be a little bit exaggerated, but that's what's going on. I mean, a C650, I know who it is, and I'm not gonna mention it, but I want it out of here. It doesn't belong. It's dangerous. It's a gray, it's a gray vessel, but it doesn't belong there. I want it out. And I'm not the only one. It's not right. Oh, that's good. I was gonna mention that we have 40,000 residents in the communities. Thank you very much. I appreciate your time.
Mark is up, and on deck, Jennifer Bright.
Hello, Commissioners, and thank you for letting me speak tonight. I'm a retired lineman. I worked for Florida Department of Labor for nine years, and I worked for a few years in the public service for 28 years. And out of them, 37 years, 36 of them, I was doing streetlights. So if there's any way I can help the city save money and help them with a whole lot of issues with streetlights, and if I can give you advice on where the cables and the power goes, you know, the high voltage and the secondaries, if there's any way I can help, I'd just like to help if I can. That's all. I'm just trying to give you my advice if I can. If I can meet with somebody and see what kind of agreement we have with them about streetlights, because I know some people, it's their number one priority, but if I can help, I will. That's all. I was just trying to offer my help if I can. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Jennifer Bright, and on deck, we have Richard Felisco.
Last year, insurance coverage for the city's property and casualty lines was awarded to Foundation Risk Partners through its various insurance carriers. Per the agenda packet, the evaluation criteria for the proposals will be evaluated on qualifications of firm, 30 points. Experience of dedicated team members, 40 points. References, 20 points. The price, just 10 points. 90% of this criteria could be seen as very arbitrary, such as how would the city determine the experience of a dedicated team member from a private company, and only 10% of the bid is based on price. It would appear that this was by design so as to renew with Foundation Risk Partners, which two of our commissioners have a direct conflict of interest. In the past, they have excused themselves from the vote, but were allowed to partake in the discussions to sway the remaining commissioners. The agenda packet also states that the city has prepared the RPF for Foundation Risk Partners, who is currently serving as the city's agent of record. Cities do not typically prepare the RFPs for vendors bidding. Instead, they should be issuing a formal solicitation which outlines the project's scope, requirements, evaluation, criteria, submission guidelines, and deadlines. Then the interested vendors can develop their proposals, which are then submitted by the specific deadline. This process ensures transparency, fairness, and competitiveness. I would also like to voice my concern for the consent item requesting a letter to the FAA for the land use change. I hope you do not go through with this because the citizens really don't want that airport expanded. Thank you.
Thank you. And Richard is up, and on deck, we have Connie Colby.
Hi, Richard. Stephen Felisco here. Longtime resident, and I now own property just north of Seabreeze High School in the Orman area and beachside. And I understand there's a letter to the FAA about the request for a land use change. In the last two years, being on the beachside, I couldn't help but notice the airport traffic that came over my house, to the tune of anywhere from 60 to 100 planes a day from the student schools, the airplane schools. And it's not just Emory Riddle anymore. There's several airport schools, airplane schools that have actually came into this area, and to me, it's created quite a problem because the planes start at 6:00 in the morning, and they go till midnight. And as many as probably, probably 20 or 30 in a three-hour period. And it's gotten out of hand. It doesn't seem, a lot of them are going to the Orman Airport. So they're going there, and they're going to the airport up there in Flagler. So it seems to me, for you to plan more airport traffic in the light of all these schools that have an eye on actually increasing that traffic, seems to me that would not be friendly for our community. It's very disturbing. I could play your recordings that would definitely change your mind if you're thinking about this, this airport being expanded up here. And maybe we can do something about the route that the planes take, because they all seem to take one path and directly over the peninsula. Thank you.
Thank you, Richard. Connie Colby, and on deck, we have Mary Beth Cunningham.
Connie Colby, 108 Roble Lane in Orman Beach. Several years ago, maybe 2017, Mayor Partington made a statement that the airport was an asset to our community, saying that it was nice that people could fly into this community, fly out, and play a round of golf in the meantime. There must be a way for the golf course and the airport to coexist and make peace in this town. The Riverbend Golf Course was a great asset to the city of Orman Beach. It was always busy and provided a public purpose for our residents, visitors, and business. Much business happens on the 19th hole. In December 2020, the lease for the golf course was terminated, basically over $271,000 tax bill. This golf course provided much-needed income for the golf course. FAA does not forbid golf courses on airport property. There's still a lawsuit that's not settled at this time regarding the airport, and before making any changes to the land, I think they should at least know what's going on with that property. While FAA can provide assistance and funding to encourage compatible land developments around airports, it has no regulatory authority for controlling the land used to protect the airport capacity. The FAA recognizes that state and local governments are responsible for land use planning, zoning, and regulations. It seems like there's been a deliberate attempt to deprive the residents to maintain the course or to search for either other operators, or consider having the city operate the course. When FAA informed the city that they were revoking the 2018 approved extension, it was stated the length was unreasonable and did not fully meet the purpose that was needed. Please make an effort to find an entity interested in assuming the 50-year lease or redeveloping the property. When we moved here in 2004, we had a public golf course. We never seemed to even have thought to ask if there was an airport or a business park here until what the man just spoke about. There's a Chapter 3 on our municipal court code that says, which I read last night at the airport advisory meeting, that airplanes are not supposed to be flying over inside the city limits at all. Thank you.
Mary Beth, and we have Patricia Franzim on deck.
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to speak. I didn't come prepared to speak, but I know how important it is that you hear our voices. My husband and I came down here about three years ago, and we found Bear Creek. We fell in love with Bear Creek, and were surprised to find how much we love Orman Beach and the city of Orman Beach. We're constantly riding bikes, going out to dinner, enjoying everything downtown, beachside, all of it. And the only thing that draws, that's been like a drawback and like a heartbreaker for us, is that for three years, we have been fighting for the peace and quiet that we enjoy. We first, we were fighting the original airport expansion when we first came down here three years ago. It was a big to-do, you know, they were gonna expand the runway right up to Bear Creek. And like, oh, brother, that's, you know, a lot of noise. And then we're fighting the fuel terminal. We've been fighting that for a year and a half. I just feel like ever since we've got here, this peaceful, beautiful community that we love and enjoy, it just feels like it's threatened all the time by development, by expansion, by the big dollar, by getting bigger planes in here, if that's what they're doing it for. I read an article in The Observer today, and it said, well, back in 2021, Governor DeSantis couldn't refuel his plane here. I'm like, okay, so one guy, four years ago, couldn't fuel his plane here, and so that's why we should expand the airport. It just, I really hope all of you sitting up there hear the voices of the residents, the people that live there. We're playing pickleball at 7:00 in the morning. My husband and I are out walking at 7:00 in the morning, and we hear the jets. We hear them on the runway waiting. When we're playing pickleball, they're going straight overhead. Sometimes you have to stop your conversation because you can't hear each other. And to think that something bigger is gonna come in, or more traffic is gonna come in, is just so disheartening. I mean, we really love Orman Beach, and we want to stay here, but the threat of what's going on is just, it's exhausting. It really is exhausting. And so I just hope you hear us, and I hope you hear what everybody's saying and what everybody's feeling, and that you do what's right for the residents of Orman Beach. And I thank you.
Patricia and Don Miller on deck.
Good evening. My name is Patricia Franzim. I live in Bear Creek, and thank you for this opportunity. On the consent agenda tonight is item K. K is seeking approval from the commission to send a letter from the city to the FAA. The letter requests that the FAA review and offer input on new proposed land uses at the airport. It specifically addresses the 170 acres that are occupied by the Riverbend Golf Course, or RGC. It seeks the FAA to review and comment on a study performed by GAI containing possible uses of RGC. There is a disclaimer in the consulting report that all the proposed new usages for RGC are subject to FAA guidelines for airport land uses. I request that item K be pulled from the consent agenda, discussed, and if not denied, at least tabled for the following reasons. One, the current commission has not thoroughly reviewed nor approved the recommendations of the consultant in totality, including the expenses necessary to execute. Two, the consultant has not presented recommendations that are compatible with current FAA guidelines by recommending retention ponds and lakes for fishing, which are prohibited by the FAA. The FAA strictly prohibits creating attractants for birds, which may cause plain airstrikes by building lakes, wetlands, water retention areas, or other waste dumps. Four, the consultant's study states the property designated for passive park use containing these water attractants be purchased for a median price of $30 million, but it only has 20 parking spaces. We need a realistic plan. Five, the consultant recommends that the golf course property be rezoned, aviation, commercial, or industrial use. This paves the way for reviving a runway extension many at Bear Creek do not want. The rezoning suggestion is premature. Many of the Bear Creek and city residents want the golf course put out for bid for a private company to rehab and operate at their expense. Rezoning assures that this is never possible. Reopening the golf course would create only income and no expenses for the city. Senior adults have no recreation in the city of Orman Beach. We need your help. There are far more voters There are far more voters who golf than fly out of the airport. Once again, thank you for your time.
Dawn and Kim Kazur is on deck.
Good evening. I think she read the same thing I did. I'm here to request item K on tonight's agenda be pulled for discussion. It needs to be tabled or denied so citizen input can be considered. Before closing Riverbend Golf in 2020, the city notified the FAA on December 22nd it would be permanently closed and that it would afford the city the opportunity to extend the runway 1,000 feet in two phases. Phase two is the 400-foot extension to the east of coming into Bear Creek and necessitated taking three of Riverbend's golf holes. That's why Riverbend had to go. Again, on June 3rd, 2021, the city emailed the FAA that the 400-foot extension east to Bear Creek would now be referred to in all future runway extensions as the ultimate plan. Maybe that's why you don't think there's, it's heading in that direction. It's got a new name. This is enough to show intent by the city to extend the runway 400 feet to Bear Creek. The current FAA airport guidelines, publication 5190-4B, declares a golf course a compatible use of land as long as it does not include wildlife attractants such as lakes or large retention ponds. Riverbend Golf would be declared compatible. Now we know the FAA does allow golf and it even allows new golf courses. The city had a no-overhead $3 million asset producing revenue for the revenue-starving airport, but didn't seek a new operator. The GAI Riverbend Land Use Concept, seeking review by the city for the FAA, by the FAA, does not include reestablishing golf. GAI's disclaimer is that they think their concepts may not fly because they did not consider any FAA land use guidelines. GAI also stated that they only met with commissioners. GAI says the city must buy the proposed parkland because it will not generate revenue for the airport as the FAA requires. The GAI concept being sent to the FAA by the city will have the city buying the parkland necessary for $30 million. That is on page 45 to 50. GAI Concept for Parks, Park Areas Number One and Two have newly installed lakes and large retention ponds. They are prohibited by the FAA. GAI says the present zoning of the golf course is recreation and conservation. The city claims it's serenatical. That needs to be resolved. That's on page 35. There has been no public input on this concept. It is clear that the least encumbered, best and most profitable use of the old golf course land is leasing it to a private operator by RFP for golf.
Thank you. Okay, Kim, and on deck we have Donna Winning.
Good evening. Thank you. I am here to have the removal of K from the consent agenda. I've been a resident for 20 years, lived in Hunter's Ridge. I feel like Ormond Beach is turning into quantity and not quality. It's all about bigger, 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 more, more, more. When I moved here 20 years ago, it was a, it was a quality place to live. It was quality of life. You could go to the golf course. Riverbend wasn't the greatest golf course in the world. It was reasonably priced. It was not too hard, not too easy. You could go out there and have a, have a drink. Beautiful course. And we've, we've ruined it. It, I mean, I guess, you know, 2020 COVID and all that, but there, there needs to be a way to save it. It is an asset and a jewel and can be a jewel to Ormond Beach and an attraction for Ormond Beach. You know, they're talking about motocross for Volusia County. Well, motocrosses, you got to have a $10,000 bike. You got to have a thousand dollars worth of gear. You got to be able to ride a motorcycle. Anybody from a four-year-old to an 80-year-old can go out and golf. Anybody can golf. You can rent clubs, 50 bucks, and 50 bucks you can have five hours of a family outing and it's, it's a great asset to Ormond Beach. So I want to see the golf course stay. Thank you.
Donna, and on deck we have Lynn Bartlett.
Good evening. My name is Donna Winning. I also live in Bear Creek Village and I feel like here we go again, having our safety threatened due to the airport expansion. I am from Miami. I moved up here a few years ago to, you know, live a quiet life and since I did work for the airlines, I do not want to hear jets flying over and due to safety issues also. And the release of jet fuel, it does happen because I know. And I just think that every issue that comes up, the Bear Creek residents along with the Ormond Beach residents are fighting for safety. Okay? We're not asking for much. We just want you all to listen and do the right thing for the residents. And why can't another airport be expanded? Daytona or, and the noise is also for takeoff and landing, which are the most dangerous. So I'm hoping that you all will listen to us and I said, as I said, do the right thing. Thank you.
Lynn, and on deck, Lindsey Pate.
Good evening, Mayor Leslie, city commissioners, and other city officials and guests. I am Lynn Bartlett and a resident of Bear Creek, and I felt very compelled tonight to speak concerning the airport and proposed use of adjacent land, which was once the Riverbend Golf Course. Please do not support lengthening the runway. Between the railroad system and the current airport activity, there is enough noise and air pollution. I retired here four years ago and absolutely love Ormond Beach. The whole area, you have the restaurants, you have the activities, and then just in our own village, we have a lot to do. And it's not just my house, it's my home, my new family of friends, my lifelong place to be content and enjoy the rest of my life. Please do not support making any additions to the airport, but please consider the seniors at Bear Creek, the family neighborhoods that surround the airport, and the Ormond Beach Sports Complex that supports so many of the competitive and recreational events. But let's provide more, a nine-hole golf course and a clubhouse where the Riverbend Golf Course used to exist, especially since there is no golf course in Ormond Beach. I'm an avid golfer and would love to see a nine-hole golf course next door. We are a very active community and a new wave of younger adults are coming in to Bear Creek. A new golf course would be supported by many in the immediate area as well as surrounding areas. And imagine, not only a golf course, but let's make it an environmentally friendly golf course, one that practices water conservation, habitat preservation, and aims toward organic maintenance with no synthetic pesticides, fertilizers, or herbicides. Now that would be something unique for Ormond Beach, supporting the environment and developing new attractions for residents and visitors. You can make it happen and we will support that. Please do not support expansion of the Ormond Beach Municipal Airport. Thank you for listening.
Lindsey and Elena Craft on deck.
Good evening, Lindsey Pate. I'm on Wildcat up in Ormond. I want to start by thanking the commission for your continued support of First Step Shelter. Homelessness is a serious issue in our community and I believe that a part of that solution lies in having a strong community partner, such as First Step Shelter, who are willing to step up and help. I appreciate your ongoing commitment to being part of that solution with them because in all actuality, we have to offer those who are unhoused an opportunity to be rehabilitated or have the opportunity to turn their life around. They're part of the solution and they shouldn't go anywhere. I encourage you to continue to use them as a vital resource and maintain that relationship. I find it apropos that FDOT was here tonight. I'm grateful for that and I'm grateful that they addressed the concerns that the Ormond Beach residents had. That tonight was a great example of how going directly to the source of FDOT to share the real concerns that citizens have is collaboration and it's way more effective than just assumptions on why they're doing something or misinformation of, oh, they're never going to change it. That was a real-life example that collaboration works and they do listen. Regarding the airport and I would say maybe some misinformation, I'd encourage both the commission and the public to stay focused on facts over feelings. These decisions that you'll be making are important and it's important that you maintain a clear head and have good information. It's easy to go to a negative headspace or play the game of, you know, negative outcomes. It might be a difficult habit to break, but in the end it doesn't serve the greater purpose. And I look forward to hearing that conversation about what that letter to the FAA could mean. From what I saw on the agenda, it means that there are recreational spaces that are being proposed and opportunities to reuse that parcel that doesn't cost the taxpayer. I personally do not want a taxpayer-funded golf course. From the minimal research I've done, the city has already tried to reach out to other golf course builders or people and find a way to bring it back and it didn't make sense. And if it's going to cost three to seven million dollars, I don't want it. We have other things that we could spend our tax dollars on. Additionally, as someone that bought in Ormond Lakes, I knew I was buying next, buying next to an airport and that was kind of on me to have that awareness of what's going on in my community. And I hope that there's a way to move forward with that that makes sense. And again, all in all, it's encouraging to see positive examples of collaboration, just as FDOT did tonight, and I hope that that's the movement going forward.
Our last speaker for tonight, Elena Craft.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Elena Craft. I'm an Ormond Lakes resident, so I'm here tonight because a few serious issues are not being addressed. The first one is Atlantic Drive. I've called the city manager and assistant manager over eight times in the last two weeks and have gotten zero responses. This road is heavily traveled, filled with deep potholes, and poses a safety hazard. I would like to know what efforts are being made to communicate with Race Track to ensure that they are properly maintaining the road. Second, just this afternoon, there was a bad accident on Hole Road in US 1. Multiple cars were involved and anyone who drives that stretch knows how dangerous it is, especially when families are trying to leave the sports complex during peak hours. Why don't we have a stoplight there yet? Do we need a deadly accident involving kids before we act? Next, the airport. When the city, when is the city going to address the irregular flight patterns? Planes are flying over homes nonstop and they are not following approved flight paths. Yesterday's aviation board meeting was filled to capacity. People are exhausted and frustrated. They're begging for relief from the constant noise, poor airport management, and lack of enforcement of approved flight path. Based on Mr. Sargent's comments during the last meeting, it seems the goal of the commissioner is to expand airport operations and residents do not want that. Please set up a dialogue between all stakeholders to answer our questions and concerns. Which brings me to the golf course. A large portion of our community wants to see the Riverbend Golf Course reinstated, yet somehow other uses are being considered without any public input. So because of that, please remove item K from the consent agenda. An aviation board member mentioned last night that the FAA would not allow a golf course there. Can you please provide actual evidence as to why a golf course is not allowed? Lastly, I'd like to update on Commissioner Kristen Deaton's proposed ordinance aimed at restricting how commissioners can communicate with their constituents. She brought this up months ago and since then, we haven't heard anything. Is this ordinance still being pursued? A dangerous proposal like that cannot be swept under the rug. Thank you for all you do and for addressing our concerns.
Okay, at this time, we're going to move to the approval of the minutes. The minutes for the May 6, 2025 city commission meeting have been sent to the commission for review and posted to the city's website. Does anyone have any corrections or changes at this time?
Move, approval.
Second. Discussion, seeing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those oppose? Okay, minutes approved. Going to move on to seven. The following items are community redevelopment items. The city commission serves as the community redevelopment agency of the city and must review these items and make recommendations as the CRA. Therefore, we'll recess the city commission meeting and call the CRA meeting to order. Madam Secretary, please read the title, 7A.
Resolution number 2025-72. A resolution of the city commission, also acting as the community redevelopment agency of the city of Ormond Beach, Florida, accepting a proposal from AM Weigel Construction, Inc. to provide construction management services for the downtown Medians Landscape Renovation Project, authorizing the execution of a work authorization thereto, and setting forth an effective date. This is resolution number 2025-72, read by title only.
Does anyone here need the city engineer to speak at this time about the item?
Move, approval.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those that don't approve, say nay. Ayes have it, motion carried. Madam Secretary, please read Title 8, 7B.
Resolution number 2025-91. A resolution of the city commission, individually and acting as the community redevelopment agency for the central business district and adjacent areas, authorizing the execution of an annual service agreement for Ormond Main Street between the city slash agency and Ormond Main Street, Inc., for the promotion of economic, physical, and aesthetic redevelopment and maintenance of the Ormond Beach Main Street District, and setting forth an effective date. This is resolution number 2025-91, read by title only.
Move, approval.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Seeing none, motion approved. I will now close the public hearing and reconvene the city commission meeting. Going to move on to eight, the consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda are deemed routine and non-controversial. The action proposed is stated for each item. Unless the city commissioner removes an item from the consent agenda, no discussion on individual items will occur and a single motion will approve all items. Does any member of the commission wish to pull any of the items from the consent agenda? Commissioner Sargent?
I would like to pull items J and K.
J and K. Okay, any other commissioners? Okay, seeing none. Can I get a motion for approval?
Move, approval excluding items J and K.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Seeing none. City clerk, please call the vote.
Commissioner Deaton?
Yes.
Commissioner Brierley?
Yes.
Commissioner Tolland?
Yes.
Commissioner Sargent?
Yes.
Mayor Leslie?
Yes. City clerk, please.
City clerk, please read 8J.
Disposition item titled RFP, Agent of Record, Property, and Casualty Insurance.
Is there a motion for approval for discussion?
Motion to approve.
Second for discussion.
Okay, discussion?
Yeah, you can go first.
Commissioner Sargent?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I currently work for the company that supplies the, the insurance for the property and casualty. As I have done in the past, I will be abstaining from voting on this item. Thank you. And I will be giving the city clerk my Form 8B accordingly.
Thank you, Commissioner. Deputy Mayor?
Yep. I too have a son that works for Foundation Risk Partners, so I will be recusing myself from voting and I will be supplying the city clerk with Form 8B as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion before I call a vote? City clerk, please call a vote.
Commissioner Brierley?
Yes.
Commissioner Tolland?
Abstain.
Commissioner Sargent?
Abstain.
Commissioner Deaton?
Yes.
Mayor Leslie?
Yes. Mayor Leslie, I think just for, just for the record, I was going to speak, this just gives the go-ahead to go up for the RFPs.
Yes, correct. All right, and city clerk, can you please read 8K?
Disposition item titled Letter to the Federal Aviation Administration Regarding Airport Land Land Use Proposals.
At this time, do we want to have a motion just for discussion right now?
Move approval.
Second.
No, sorry, it wasn't on. Okay, discussion? Commissioner Brierley?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I just want to go back if I can, if the commission and the audience will allow me to kind of give a history on this because, believe it or not, I was here when this came about back in 1991. I'm probably not as old as I look.
Yeah, you are.
Maybe I am. But this airport was started as a government training field in the 1940s during World War II. In 1947, 48, the city of Ormond Beach entered an agreement with the federal government to provide an airport for recreational aviation. And that was fine and well. Up until about 1990, 1991, the Eddy brothers, the Eddy family came in and had the desire to develop the Riverbend Golf Course. And I was at those meetings whenever they were talking about construction of the Riverbend Golf Course. And there were people, was anyone here in 91? Just show your hands. A few folks. There were people in Bear Creek at the time who were not in favor of the golf course. And the people you heard more from, though, than just the people around the golf course, were the environmental folks because of the destruction of the trees that would be required to develop a golf course. The amount of pesticides, herbicides and fertilizers that you need to keep golf courses nice. When you're using that adjacent to an outstanding Florida waterway as designated by the Florida Legislature, the Tamoca River, it makes it pretty dicey. And it's not good for the environment. One thing we did get out of that is a token of appreciation, if you will, was the Riverbend Park, which is contiguous to the golf course. My concern is, and my fear is, and I used to play that golf course. I liked it. Very long course. It was a fun course to play. And it's unfortunate that the things that transpired when they did, that the golf course became abandoned. The LSC was no longer paying the lease to the city, was no longer paying property taxes to the county. I don't think, and I like the idea of a private entity coming in and taking the golf course and putting it back to what it once was. I don't think the reality is we'll find anybody that's willing to spend that kind of money and not own the property. Because they'll still have to pay the city a lease. No one's going to spend eight to 10 million dollars to renovate an old golf course and not have ownership of it. It's just not going to happen. So the only other option at that point would be for the city to increase taxes to make repairs to the course or do a referendum for a bond. Then you put it in the voters' hands if they want to tax themselves to renovate a golf course. And that's possible. On the other side, you have to maintain that golf course. The bonds not want to cover that. That's yearly maintenance, fertilizers, pesticides, herbicides, whatever it takes, water, to keep a golf course going. I don't know if there's enough there to do that. And my other fear is, I don't want the city to get into another situation again where we have a LSC who gets in some sort of financial trouble and can't pay the city for the lease, or the rent they owe to the city for the golf course, and they refuse to pay the county what they owe them, and the county comes after the city in a lawsuit to collect the money. Why should the taxpayers pay for something that a LSC didn't do when they rented property from the city? It shouldn't happen. So one thing I would like to see, I would like to see an official letter, though, and it's been brought about tonight, I would like to see an official letter from the FAA. Because it has been mentioned that the FAA would not permit a golf course there today if one was applied for. I would like to see something writing from the FAA that officially says that a golf course wouldn't be allowed. That way, we don't have this he said, she said, or can you or can't you. I would like something from the FAA saying either you can have a golf course there or you can't. And Mr. Mayor, I may have some more later, but that's all I have for now. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Brierley. Commissioner Sargent?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And thank you, the residents, for coming out and voicing your opinion. I appreciate it and I take it to heart. This plan, if you will, that was in the paper recently, was also in the Ormond Observer on May 16, 2024, that showed the future uses of this property. So this wasn't just sprung upon, if you will. It was thoroughly done. I do have a question for whoever can answer it. To clarify, if a Citation 650 is, I believe, Class C to land at our airport?
If I understood you correctly, Stephen Linklater, Airport Manager, if I understood you correctly, sir, you're asking if the Cessna C650 is appropriate for our airport?
If that is the current class, my biggest concern with even talking about runway extension is that we do not talk about exploring the option to move to a higher class of aircraft. What I'm discussing is the current uses of the airport, is the Citation 650 within the current uses?
Yes, it is.
Thank you. So what I like to deal with is facts. And when I hear that we have stuff that's not authorized, I don't like hearing that. So I'm glad that the public knows that we do have that that plane is authorized to land and operate out of our airport.
Yes, sir, it is.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I still have a few more, Mr. Mayor.
Stephen?
I brought up probably two years ago now to send this out for an RFP, to see if anyone would want to explore operating a golf course. And I think Commissioner Brierley said six to 10 million. And it is a hard sell roughly because you're, you know, when, excuse me, LPGA was up for sale, you were buying an asset, you owned the property. With this golf course, we are asking someone to invest, or the taxpayers invest, in the property, and someone take it over and they don't own it. And the city of Ormond Beach does not set what that lease would be. The FAA sets that. And that price currently is roughly upwards of $100,000 a year. So what I would like to propose tonight, if anyone else on the commission would like to go along with it, I would like to send this letter to the FAA, but I would like to add a few things. I would like to add a specific question asking if an 18-hole golf course is an approved item use of property per the FAA. Because I too, Commissioner Brierley, want it in black and white. I think what we need to do to make sure we get the proper answer from the FAA is to be as detailed as possible in our request. We need to spell out the acreage, spell out, you know, like I said, the 18 holes. As much information, maybe diagrams, everything, because I want a concrete, black and white answer. I don't want, well, it may be okay under this, or it may be okay under that. I want a black and white answer from the FAA. And in the meantime, while we wait on the FAA to respond to this letter, I would like people to reach out, staff, whoever it may be, to golf operators of courses, to see if anyone is interested. That if the FAA comes back and says it is approved and someone wants to take it over, and they're okay with it, and they think financially they can do it, great. I am not willing to have the taxpayers subsidize it and have to spend eight to 10 million, or whatever it may be. Maybe those numbers are high, maybe they're low. I don't know. I'm not in that business. Whatever it may be, it's a lot of money. But I'm willing to explore it. So I don't know if any other commissioner is okay with adding that to the letter, but that's what I would like to propose tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Sargent. I can say that I like some of the ideas here. It's very well thought of. And I think that maybe we should ask some questions real quick about some of those recommendations to see if they're even possible. And maybe I could borrow Stephen for another minute here to, and it might not be a question you might know, but we'll try with you first.
So my question to you, Stephen, is that are some of the recommendations that Commissioner Sargent made just now, something that the FAA can in fact answer those questions? Or do they need a site plan? Or is there some other things they're going to be asking for? Or will it be as easy as just making that request?
It is very likely the FAA would ask for more information. It's really a situation where we won't know until we ask. If we make the request and they require more information, then we'll respond accordingly. But I'm not sure that they'll be able to give us a definitive answer with just this letter.
Mr. Mayor, can I take you back on that just a second?
Just one real question.
Sure, sure.
How long does it take to get a response back from them when we do make requests?
The FAA currently is experiencing a lot of the challenges that other federal agencies are experiencing. I can tell you from a more typical standpoint, meaning project discussions, grant applications. I have colleagues at other airports who have grant applications pending from October that they haven't heard anything on. So the ADO, the Orlando Airports District Office, is, they've lost several staff members. So their responsiveness at this point is probably going to be on the long side.
Okay. Commissioner Brierley?
Yeah, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor. And Stephen, I was just going to take you back on kind of what Commissioner Sargent said and what the mayor said. If we do ask this question of the FAA, instead of getting real detailed, they should have, and if they don't, we have the current layout of what the golf course was. And that's what I would propose to them because I don't think anyone's going to come in and want to reconfigure that golf course because that's just going to cost a lot more money.
The existing or the former golf course leasehold area is reflected on the airport layout plan. So yes, the FAA does have that layout.
I would just go with that instead of trying to give, I mean, I think that may be somewhat detailed enough, just to give them the idea of what the parameters of the golf course are or were. And either a yes or no on that question.
Commissioner Sargent?
That's why I don't want just a letter. I want as much information that we have from the start of this, when the Eddy Corporation started this golf course, to what we have now. I don't care if it's a big packet. Give them everything so we're not waiting. I don't want just a question sent to them. We need to provide as much information as possible.
I'll just jump on that for a second and say that I think the only issue that we'll have is that they might require a site plan from a potential bidder of somebody who wants to operate the course. And, but they might, but a potential operator might not want to do it exactly the way the site plan is.
We can cross that bridge when we come to it.
Okay. Well, I'm sorry, Deputy Mayor, you had a question?
I did have a question. So I just want to be clear. So we are going to add to the letter. We're still going to submit the letter of the plan that we have for, we're going to still ask for other uses for the golf course, the old golf course, and add the golf course piece to it, correct? So it'll be and ors. Can we do this? And/or can we do this?
I think the problem-
Are we doing it separately?
I think the problem with that, though, is the FAA is going to ask us, you know, what are we doing? We doing one or two?
To some extent, it's the same thing because the purpose of this letter is to request FAA's comments on potential non-aeronautical use of airport property-
Correct.
-which a golf course also is. So there's a little bit of redundancy.
So could we list all the things that could potentially be, and then include a golf course in there?
We could simply add, in addition to these, because the GAI proposals were exactly that. They were just suggested possible uses. They didn't necessarily define what it was going to look like. And we could simply add a golf course as another possibility for this non-aeronautical use.
And, well, is this slowing down the process? I mean, right now, we have some unsafe obstacles, you know, at the airport. Is this process going to slow down-
No.
-that mitigation? We're going to continue with that?
No, obstruction mitigation at the airport is our highest priority. It would not interfere with that.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Sargent?
So I think it's threefold. I think we're overcomplicating something here. We're sending the letter as is in the agenda packet currently. We're adding the question is if we can, if the golf course is an authorized use of the FAA property. And in the meantime, we're going to explore to see if anyone wants to take over the golf course at the current condition. Site plan that we provide them is as needed, or as currently sits, I should say. So if an operator, if we find someone that wants to take it over, it's under the understanding that this is the layout that you have to deal with. You can rehab it, but this is the layout. I don't think we need to overcomplicate it and get into the what ifs of the FAA. It's already, it's going to take forever to get something back, probably. I would like to streamline it, provide as much information upfront, be as detailed as possible, and explore the options for someone else to take it over. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I just would like just, I want clarity and definitive answers if we can. Stephen, I'm not putting this on you or the FAA, but a clear answer from the FAA. I want yes, you can, or no, you cannot. Because what I hate is when I hear, well, you should not. It doesn't say you can't. So I think they should give us either the red light or the green light, no gray area. I mean, that's on you. That's just, I think, what I'm looking for from them.
Understood. The closest clear answer we've gotten from the FAA regarding the response from their environmental personnel regarding potential conflicts was Section 4F of the U.S. Department of Transportation Act of 1966. And Section 4F is designed to protect recreational areas and park areas from transportation projects. FAA's environmental person at that time, who's no longer with them, indicated to us that any use of airport property for recreational purposes could, if it could potentially interfere with the airport, might be a reason for them to disallow it. So that's one possible answer we could get from-
But that was a rule they had in 66, and they approved this in 91. So, and I do know that in talking to some folks that were involved with it back in 91, that, you know, they were, at the time, the FAA was actually encouraging recreational facilities around airports. Now, their view of that may have changed, but that's what it was back in 91.
Environmental concerns are much more prevalent today than they were back then.
Randy, did you want to say something?
Yes, sir. I just want to share some thoughts and observations. So the letter that you have presently before you this evening has attached to present to the FAA the concept plan. That's a commission approved in 2024. So what you're talking about now is not wholly consistent with that plan. So it's almost like an option A and option B, right? Now, it's possible, and I'm going to defer to the city manager on this, that the staff can take direction this evening, kind of fudge that letter up a little bit, and then send it over. And that, with that in mind, the other option is, is staff, you know, you just table it, then staff kind of works it out in detail a little bit and brings it back to you.
I like that idea, table on this, because it sounds like it's getting a little choppy.
Well, my concern is, is that if you don't give the FAA enough detail, they may not give you a solid answer. And that's just based on my own interactions with them many years ago. They like detail and they like information. And it may be a question, so a simple question, they may have some trouble- And it may be a question, so a simple question, they may have some trouble answering definitively, and they may need more detail. And so, you know, you have one concept plan that's a commission voted on. That's your concept for the development of that airport property, or the golf course property, which is airport property, in 2024. If you want to ask about another opportunity that's not consistent with that, that needs to be clearly stated and perhaps described with an attachment of the existing old golf course.
So you're saying the president would like to-
Speaker.
I'm going to reserve comment on my experiences with them, but they're going to want more detail.
Okay. I mean, so what you're saying is that you're suggesting that attach the existing property plans, maybe with that conceptual plan, to the FAA so that they can review both of them?
Look, I don't want to get in the minds of the commission because I don't know what you're thinking individually in terms of what might be an acceptable alternative golf course use for the land, whether it's the existing layout, whether it's something completely different. And I thought at one time we did go out for an RFP, didn't we? Or did we just talk about it?
Okay.
Okay. But I guess it's more of a rhetorical statement that has a question attached that I want you to think about before you give direction to staff.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
I think I hear the city attorney saying is that he would like staff to take another stab at the letter that would incorporate this option that we're talking about for the golf course, and then bring it back to you for consideration.
I like that, yeah. I like that. Because you know what? Let's get it right the first time, and we need a little more time, I think. So I like that. Does, how does the commission feel about that? Table it and then have staff come back and they can just clean it up?
I don't think we're tabling it. We're moving forward with it.
We're just moving.
Just having them revise the letter.
Okay, yeah, revise the letter, yeah.
And, but I still think that we need to explore the options, see if there's an operator that wants to take it over. Maybe there is. I don't know. I'm willing to explore that option. And if that's what someone wants to do, I'm willing to say yes.
Okay.
But I have one more, just to clean up something.
You know what? Yep, go ahead, just sorry.
My comment in the observer, I think, was misconstrued. I didn't say that the governor's plane, the point that I made in that workshop meeting was they could not unlock the fuel farm. My point was that we need a better FBO out there that is better functioning so that he could fuel up his plane. That was where my comment was on that.
Deputy Mayor?
I think I just forgot what I was-
I think I just forgot what I was going to say. What was the comment you made right before? Oh. Never mind, I can't think.
If you remember to come back.
I'm confused.
Commissioner Deaton?
I'm so sorry. I'm feeling a bit nauseous and lightheaded. I really do apologize, but I want to be here. I would like to see something in writing from the FAA indicating that a golf course, whether it's nine or 18 holes, can or cannot be a use. I'm not, I'm not opposed to it by any means. I don't want it to be a burden on the taxpayers, but I'm not opposed to it.
Okay. All right. So at that time, then, we have a motion, though, for approval in the way, oh, sorry.
I'm sorry. I really do, I do remember what I was going to say.
Okay, go ahead.
So when Commissioner Sargent was discussing it, I think we should, my personal feeling is we should send the letter out first, get a response from the FAA. If they say yes, a golf course is an acceptable use for them, then we can send it out for-
RFP?
Yes, an RFP.
Okay.
Why would we send it out if we don't even know we can do it?
Okay.
I'm not saying we send it out. I'm saying we explore the options to see if there's an operator out there that may be interesting, interested in taking it over if it gets approved by the FAA.
How do you explore options if you don't even know you have that option to provide?
Call people that operate golf courses and explain our situation.
Okay.
See if they're willing to, you know, if someone wants to invest in that and just explore options. We don't need to delay it till we get a response six, eight months down the road from the FAA. We can, go ahead, you can make phone calls, people can kind of figure that out.
I would be okay with that. I think it's a little out of sync, but I'm okay.
Joyce, can you jump in? Yeah.
So we would have to bring the RFP back to you.
Not sending it.
I know, but I can't get a definitive answer from someone without a specific set of parameters. What are we looking for? Nine hole, 18 hole? You know, we have to lay out the current condition of all that. They're going to want to come and look at the golf course. So we have to be very specific about that. I mean, what I would suggest that you do, and just talking with Randy, is to send the current letter that you have with a caveat that you're looking at a possible golf course, and you will have more information. But I don't have enough information to call people and say, do you want to bid on this? And I'm happy to do that if that, if that makes you happy, but I don't think I'm going to get many responses.
Well, the FAA could come back and say, well, we'll approve a nine-hole course or an 18-hole course, so we don't know how to-
Yeah.
Maybe move forward with the RFP, letting them know what would be approved or not, so.
Well, I think we should start with the letter first, though, right? Because we need to know for sure if the FAA will approve the golf.
That's fine. That'd be my first question.
Yes.
If it's even in play.
Yes. So I think that providing a letter and added a language of a possible golf course would be a good direction to go. And if we can do that, then, who made the motion? Was it you that made the first motion, Deputy Mayor?
I think Harold or-
No, it wasn't me.
Oh, Sergeant did, okay. Commissioner Sargent, would you want to change your motion then? You're from-
I will amend my motion to send the current letter, adding the language-
Possible golf course.
-to ask the FAA if an 18 or nine-hole golf course is an approved use for this property.
And second?
I'll second that.
Okay. Any other further discussion? Okay. City Clerk, please call the vote.
Commissioner Sargent?
Yes.
Commissioner Deaton?
Yes.
Commissioner Riley?
Yes.
Commissioner Tallin?
Yes.
Mayor Leslie?
Yes. Any other comments about items on the consent agenda?
I have.
Okay. Go ahead, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. My first comment is on 8C, and that's reappointing a member to serve on the Volusia Growth Management Commission. We have nominated Bill Navara. He, I just want to just make a few comments, that he is a community servant. We've all seen him and his generosity, helping Main Street, helping events in the city. I appreciate his willingness to serve. I can't think of anybody more appropriate. He loves his community, he elaborates well, he's a smart businessman, and he will represent Ormond wonderfully. I also want to make a comment on 8D. I don't know if Waste Pro is still in the House, but Waste Pro has been a very good partner of the city. They're very reliable, they're very dependable, and I know I sincerely appreciate the service that they provide to me in my, in my home. So I just wanted to point that out. And that is it. Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Is there anyone else that'd like to comment anything on the consent? I'll just say that I'd like to thank the residents that came out. I hope that this will give you a little bit of a better feeling of what will happen with the future use of Riverbend. And I'd like to thank my colleagues here for working together on trying to hear the residents and seeing what we can do to try to help the cause. So with that said, we're going to move on on the agenda here. We're going to move to nine. I will now open the public hearings. City Clerk, please read Title 9A.
Ordinance Number 2025-19, An Ordinance Approving the Final Plat for the Enclave Subdivision, Establishing Conditions and Expiration Date of Approval and Setting Fourth an Effective Date. This is the first reading of Ordinance Number 2025-19, read by title only.
Does anyone need the Plan Director to speak on this item?
Move approval.
Oh, Deputy Mayor, hold on.
I will second it, but I do have a question for Mr. Sprinker, if you wouldn't mind.
Okay. No problem.
Thank you. This is just a confirmation. So these, these houses are in very large acreage. And when you look at the plat towards the back of the property, they all are in a conservation area. Houses won't be built on the conservation area, right? They'll all be more front of the properties towards Timber Creek, I guess it was?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I just wanted to confirm that.
Yep.
Thank you so much.
Do we need the applicant to speak on the item? No? Okay, we had a motion here, right?
Second.
Okay. Any other discussion? Seeing none. City Clerk, please call the vote.
Commissioner Deaton?
Yes.
Commissioner Riley?
Yes.
Commissioner Tallin?
Yes.
Commissioner Sargent?
Yes.
Mayor Leslie?
Yes. City Clerk, please read 9B.
Ordinance Number 2025-20, An Ordinance Approving the Final Plat for the Fountain View Phase 1C Subdivision, Shown Within Phase 1 of the Plantation Oaks Planned Residential Development, Establishing Conditions and Expiration Date of Approval and Setting Fourth an Effective Date. This is the first reading of Ordinance Number 2025-20, read by title only.
Does anyone need the Plan Director to speak on this one? Seeing none.
Move approval.
The applicant? No? Okay.
Second.
Second. Any other discussion? Seeing none. City Clerk, please call the vote.
Commissioner Riley?
Yes.
Commissioner Tallin?
Yes.
Commissioner Sargent?
Yes.
Commissioner Deaton?
No.
Mayor Leslie?
Yes. I will now close the public hearings. We're going to move on to 10 on staff and commission reports, suggestions and requests, starting with the city manager.
Thank you all. Just a couple of things. Tuesday, June 3rd, believe it or not, we're already going to start our capital planning for our budget workshop. So I know, it's, I can't believe it's almost June. So that's, you're meeting on June 3rd, you'll have a workshop for your capital budget. On Tuesday, July 22nd, you will have your operating budget workshop. We always do the capital first because those are big dollars and we got to squeeze those in, and then we look at the operating workshop. And we're waiting to hear back from Doug Thomas on the strategic plan finalization. So we'll be bringing that to you when that's finished. This is the last session of the Citizens Academy. It will be this Thursday, and graduation will be on June 3rd at the next city commission meeting. And I want to give a special shout out to Susan Dotteras and her staff, who have done an excellent job with that program. It's very well attended, it's very well organized, and everybody enjoys it. So, great job. Thank you to Taylor Lockett for filling in for Susan this evening, and Ashley Clements as our recording secretary. That's another wonderful thing that Susan Dotteras has done so well, is cross-trained her staff, so they're all able to fill in, and you all do an excellent job. So thank you. The Ormond Beach Memorial Day Remembrance Service will take place on Monday, May 26th, at 9:00 a.m. at Rockefeller Gardens. That's really a wonderful event, and so I encourage you all to attend. We don't really put on that event, I don't think we have a third party that works with us to do that. And the commission will have their regular spaces that they're available to park at. And then I'll ask Sean Finley to come forward to talk a little bit about the Casson Park building and signage for that building. And then one last thing, as Sean's coming up. I want to thank FDOT for being so responsive to the city's request for the multi-use trail. I would like to have a special shout out to the residents, in particular Mr. Jeff Boyle, who has been a champion for that project. And to Sean Finley's keen eye, when looking at the drawings, noticed that the color or the grade on the drawings indicated concrete, not asphalt. And that's when we went back to them and talked to them and said, hey, you said it was going to be concrete. And I guess they were having a little bit of a budget issue at the time and were looking for other funds. But in addition, he noticed the grade of that sidewalk didn't look right to him, and he pointed it out to FDOT, and they agreed, and they will have that fixed. So it's really spectacular when a big government agency like the Florida Department of Transportation can recognize some errors in what happens and really make corrections. And I think that's due in large part to the wonderful working relationship the city has cultivated with the Florida Department of Transportation, District 5, way back to when District 5 Secretary was Jared Perdue, and now he's the big secretary, as we call him, of the whole state. So they've been very responsive to the city, and I appreciate our residents for speaking out and making it known, and I think we'll have a project that we can all be proud of. So, thank you very much. And I'm available to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Joyce. Assistant City Manager?
Casson Park.
Oh, oh, sorry.
It's okay. I'm off and over.
I'm going faster than I need to.
Thank you for taking a minute here. Sorry, pull a little bit closer. Sorry about that. Not tall. Couple, I think in our last meeting, we were asked to take a look at the signage on Casson Park, on the Casson Park building. As you will notice, we are rapidly getting to a point where that new building is going to be the only building over there. And so we're very excited that we're going to have a new home for the bait shop and bathrooms. So we took a look, per your request, just a little bit of the history of Casson Park. The fishing pier is constructed in 1984, the bait shop was added in 1994, and the floating dock and breakwater added in 2019. The park was known as Riverfront Park until 1998, where the name was changed to honor Mayor Ernest Casson, who passed away in December 1997. So that's the history of why it's called Casson Park. And I think that that's one of the things we want to really highlight here as we talk about what we're, what we're putting on buildings and what we're putting on signs there, is that this is Casson Park, and I think of the importance of that. There's going to be entry signage, there's going to be signage out front that's going to show Casson Park. It's going to have the logo, the city's logo, it's going to have Casson Park's name. On both sides, it'll be white stucco with bronze letters. We're going to have the Ormond Beach Veterans Plaza, and it's under construction right now, so you can see a little bit of the current status of that. So it'll have, be a kind of a low knee wall with that coquina accenting it along the bottom. So I think it's a, it's a nice touch. Kind of makes a half-moon shape with the flags in the background of it. So I think it's, it really is a good, good touch to the park. This is what we had approved through SPRC. And these are the elevations, and as you look out the window on a, you know, earlier in the day, you could see that it really does kind of match what we're seeing there. What was approved was this, Ormond Bait Shop. And I think one of the things that we really kind of, we're trying to emphasize was, you know, that this is where the bait shop is, not, not really trying to assign it to anything, not, not to take away from the fact that it's Casson Park. We all appreciate, you know, Ike and what he does, but we were kind of looking towards making it, the intention was to keep it simplistic here. There is opportunity for identification for Ike, and similar to what he has right now on his door, there's the glass door. It's approximately 30 inches wide of glass, you can go three to four feet high, so that gives him about 12, 10 to 12 feet of square footage on his door that we can put Ike's granada pier bait and tackle, vinyl lettering right there on the, on the glass door. That's what we're kind of, that's what staff is recommending. This is the square footage of the sign. One of the things that we want to kind of also put up is just to be consistent. We've got three leased, three facilities, actually four leased facilities. Casson Park, we've got a vendor at Andy Romano Petron Park. There's no, there's no signage identification to that specific vendor. I think there's on the window that they have there. Nova's, at the Nova Rec Skate Park, there is a vendor that rents the skate park building. He's got signage inside the building. I didn't add on here the Performing Arts Center, where we've got a concessionaire that runs the concession in there. They, again, have a, have a signage right there at the window for the concession. We've got concession stands, and it should be two at Nova Rec, nine of them at Ormond Beach Sports Complex. Those are run by the different organizations that are, the youth sports organization. The only one that does have anything that identifies beyond who they are and what organization they are is the Seabreeze mural. So, we're looking for a little bit of consistency here, and so that's one of the things that we're proposing, is to go with the SPRC-approved signage.
Commissioner Riley?
Yeah, I just have a question. Sean, could you bring up the rendering of the building? Yeah. So, the bait shop, and Ike, remind me your hours, you stay open in the evenings, open till like 9?
Going to weekend till 8.
Okay.
Saturday, Sunday, every day.
Okay. I'm sorry, I asked you a question, so.
Yeah, we should have a speaker on record.
So, my point was this. My point was this. There are evenings that Ike is open after dark, or times that Ike is open after dark. And we know that, you know, Ike may not have the bait shop forever. At some point, he's going to retire or decide not to do it anymore, what have you. My thought would be, instead of doing where it's just pretty generic Ormond Bait Shop, and not doing channelized letters, because channelized letters are expensive. But if we put some sort of sign on the building that's backlit with the plastic panel, you know, Ike Leary's Bait Shop at Casson Park, or something like that. That way, when Ike retires or whatever, and you get a new vendor in there, you take the insert out, you put a new insert in, for whoever it may be. But part of the reason I bring this up is, you know, Ike's a little bit different scenario. I mean, he is one of our goodwill ambassadors for the city. He probably promotes our city more at Casson Park than anyone, because he's there all the time. And that would just be my, you know, I don't have a problem putting Ike Leary's bait shop at Casson Park, or something like that, in a backlit sign. Similar size, doesn't have to be huge, but something of that nature. Again, not channelized lettering where, you know, once Ike is no longer there, you have to go in there and take the channelized letters off the building and replace it, but this would be something that could be, you know, utilized by the next tenant. That's all.
Commissioner Sargent?
Got to tell you, I don't like it. Ike Leary is one of our ambassadors. He fills up the soap dishes in the bathrooms. He fills up the toilet paper when it's needed, paper towels. Two meetings ago, I believe it was, I asked on the dais if this commission was okay with adding Ike's name to that, and I had a consensus. Now, we're back to this. I'm not okay with it.
Commissioner Deaton?
Who's the vendor at the Nova Rec fields?
The, I believe.
Is it the Spikes?
I'm sorry?
Is it the Spikes?
I think it's the youth sports organization, so I guess it's with Spikes.
They have a sign.
Okay. I'm sorry.
Yeah, they have a sign that says Home of the Spikes right on top of the concession stand. I'd like to see Ike's name.
Deputy Mayor?
So, I kind of like Harold's idea. I like having, I want to say consistency throughout the city. I don't care about the lettering or whatever, I think I'll let the architect figure that out. I would not be opposed, and I think Ike is a very good ambassador, I would not be opposed to have his name on the building at someplace, whether it's what Commissioner Riley said, or whether it's on the window, or somewhere where it's prominent. But I do like the consistency of all the buildings. I would like to honor his name somewhere on that, but that, nothing that would be permanent or defacing the building.
Commissioner Sargent?
So, here we are, I mean, we could add Ike's name to the top if he retires or moves on, whatever, we can take it off. What I'm having a hard time with is we had a consensus on this dais to change it. Why are we coming back to this now? To me, we came forward, we said what we wanted, we all agreed on it, there was more than three people, and now we're going back to, it's not, I'm sorry, I'm not okay with it.
Deputy Mayor?
I don't think we had, we had consensus that Ike's name needed to be on there somewhere, but I don't think we had a discussion as to where and the permanency or not. I don't remember, well.
I'm going to echo the deputy mayor here on this one, that I think that, you know, it's a nice idea, but as long as it's consistent with the rest of the properties in the city, then I haven't issues either.
So, why do we have a conversation up here and direct staff to do something and then come back and change?
I don't think that the minutes reflect that there was a consensus.
I'll go back. There was a consensus.
May I just make a recommendation, or at least be a motion, that we do some sort of, where it says Ormond Bait Shop, similar size, backlit sign with an insert. That way, it's not a channelized letter, so it's not, it's not hard to replace in the future. That has an insert that says something to the effect, Ike Leary's Bait Shop at Casson Park.
Let me just add, excuse me, as well, I believe the SPRC met before the commission's discussion, and SPRC meets as part of like a development review process, so there's a process for that. So, I don't think it was necessarily ignoring the desire of the commission as much as the fact that the SPRC probably met well before this commission had discussed it, and staff, I don't believe, had a clear consensus within themselves in terms of what the lettering should be. So, what they presented to you is what SPRC has had essentially voted on or approved prior to your last commission. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. But with that, I think the staff has clear direction now.
There is a motion, right? Is there a motion?
We didn't need one, did we?
With that, I'll make that a motion. The motion would be that we do a sign similar to what's shown as far as size, what the city will allow for size, a backlit sign with a plastic insert. That way, it's not channelized, we don't have to replace in the future with another channelized sign, basically saying Ike Leary's Bait Shop at Casson Park.
Okay, that's your motion? Do we have a second?
I will have a second for a discussion. So, would that replace this?
Ormond Bait Shop.
That would replace that sign?
Yeah. Because I'm afraid if you put something on the door, then you just, you get too much. You don't want something on the building, I think, and something on the glass door. I just think you put something right there, it's backlit, so at night, people see it.
So, your attempt is so it's not a permanent?
It can be replaced in the future.
It can be removed.
Correct.
Do you think it's smart for us to say exactly what it is, or should we let like an engineer, or an artist, or whoever, designer, come up with that in whatever other product there may be?
What we can do is, based on that direction, and I think that's a little bit more precise direction of specific to the backlit letters with, with.
Something.
A little bit more than the channelized letters, and I think that potentially, we may have been confused that we will, that if there was to be some specific, that it was to be all channelized, we can bring back, obviously, we'll bring back the shop drawings, the proofs to share with.
Sure. I wouldn't. Yeah, channelized letters are a little more permanent, and if you just do a plastic insert, say Ike decides next year he's going to retire, and Joe comes in there, it can be Joe's Bait Shop. That's fine.
I think the most important thing is specific. What do you exactly want to say? That's what we need. And then we'll give you some options about how it can, we need consensus on it.
Okay.
I mean, I don't have, unless Ike objects, Ike Leary's Bait Shop at Casson Park.
If I may ask?
Sure.
If you permit us, we will work with Ms. Ike Leary and bring something back to you that meets, that works closer towards that goal.
The applicant wanted to speak real quick, so I'm going to give him a second here, just to, I'm sorry, the bait shop owner, sorry.
Back years ago, Mayor Partington dedicated that pier to me. It's called Ike's Granada Pier, okay? Well, I got a bait and tackle shop there too, which I've been in since 1999, and that's when Ormond was in the mine, they came to me and asked me to take it over, and I did. That was 26 years ago, okay? I've got a son that, when I retire, is going to jump right in there, okay? As far as I'm concerned, it will always be Ike's Granada Pier bait and tackle, and that's how I'd like to leave it.
Okay, thank you, Ike. Okay, Sean?
We apologize for any misunderstanding. We will bring back to you some proofs for you to take a look at and make sure that we're on the same page.
Can you, Commissioner Brod, can you just make an amendment to that motion then? So, that's where we got that on record, and what you, what you exactly want?
Sure, I will just defer to what Mr. Leary would like, I think it was Ike's, put the next slide up, Sean. Ike's Granada Pier bait and tackle.
Okay.
Is that right, Ike?
Okay, and then the second was already done by Deputy Mayor Tallent?
Just to make sure she reflects.
Yes.
Yes, I'll second it.
Okay. Any other further discussion? Should we call a vote, or are we just going to do a yes, no here? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Okay, so, from there, we're going to move on to closing comments from the assistant city manager.
No comments, thank you.
Okay. City attorney?
No, sir. Thank you, good night.
Good night. This evening will begin with Commissioner, Deputy Mayor Tallent.
Thank you very much, appreciate it. It's been a busy couple weeks for me, and I just, I will just briefly list the things I've done, and then I had, I do have a couple comments. Ribbon cutting at Tamoka State Park for Talansia Garden Club. They donated a bench at their native plant garden up there. There was also ribbon cutting at Backwater Provisions on East Granada. Great folks, I would encourage anybody to stop by and look at their outdoor apparel and supplies. I was just curious to see how the leadership class in the Ormond Beach Chamber went, so I attended the graduation of their 21st class. The resounding theme was everlasting friendships, collaboration, and partnership. Environmental Discovery Center hosted a native plant specialist, Katie Tripp, and she taught about native landscapes for beachside residential properties, highlighted salt-tolerant discussions. She also highlighted Badger Park, which I was very pleased with. I attended the Volusia County Elected Officials Roundtable, where city officials received legislative updates. They talked about the dangerous dog regulations, hurricane previews, sea turtle nesting, and the flooding task force updates. And this is just a quick comment to Randy Hayes. So, the county talked about their updates for the dangerous dog ordinances they have. It's all related to liability and insurance, so I'm just wondering if you wouldn't mind just reaching out to see if there's anything that we can do to even make our ordinances tighter, or we may be doing better. I don't know, but if you would come back and report, I would appreciate that. All right. Volusia League of Cities Executive Board Meeting, there was a discussion on the importance of advocacy during the legislative session. We do still have a lot of outstanding bills that we're following, and just FYI, the annual banquet is this Thursday in New Smyrna Beach. I did attend a BPAC, BPAC Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Council, and I came back to staff and kind of shared some of the input that I learned there, and I just want all the residents to know that our staff works hard, and we have a lot of projects already on the TPO, the transportation, what does that all stand for? Thank you. A lot of mnemonics here, on their radar, and that's really because our staff has worked hard to get those projects noticed. Let's see. There was also ribbon cutting at the Ormond Museum of Arts and Gardens, and they have a Wayfinders Project, where they do signage throughout the gardens, and they are including the visually impaired with the signage. Stephanie Mason Teague is just an amazing asset to the community, and she's always bringing people in into the fold. There was a Pace Breakfast, and that's an alternative school for girls, and we heard some heartwarming stories, they were raising some funds, and they have a design and a place to relocate. So, I'm sorry if I bored you with that. So, Randy, I asked you about the dangerous dogs. Just FYI, there is an app, we're getting close to hurricane season, there is an app that you can download, Volusia County Emergency Management. I did download that. You can, it will show you weather maps, alerts, shelters, so getting ready for that season, that might be a useful tool. Commissioners, the PAC is, has a fundraising opportunity with the BRIC program. I told some of the folks there that I would remind you how impactful it would be if you guys would consider donating a BRIC to that program, would kind of show our support of The next thing I want to talk about is the lifeguard shortage in Ormond Beach. I know we've received a letter from Mr. Boyle, I've also been in communication with Troy Kent, who's also been in communication with the county, and we are underserved on our beaches in Ormond Beach, and that is a safety factor. So, if it is the pleasure of this commission, I would love it if you all would want to ask staff to write a letter to the county, asking them to man the lifeguard chairs up in Ormond Beach for this upcoming summer. Is that something you are, would be interested in?
I'm good with that.
Everyone good with that? We're all shaking our heads, so that's a yes.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much, and I am working in collaboration with Troy Kent, who is doing the same thing at the county level. Regarding the Circle K proposed, the proposed Circle K, I just want to make a comment, I wasn't going to make a comment about it, but since Ms. Bo back was here tonight, I do think it's important that the planning department do look at the zoning for future when residents are up against gas stations. And, you know, I know we're always revising and relooking, and this seems to be a very pertinent topic, so thank you so much. And let's see. One more request of my commission. So, there is a bill, Senate Bill 180, I'm sure you guys are aware of it, and it is a bad bill. It's on the desk of Governor DeSantis, it's infringing on our home rule, it's under the pretenses of emergencies. There's a few sections in it that directly affect our local government and our free choice to change our comp plans in the case of emergencies. This bill stops counties and cities from making restrictive changes, and it would also remove some stormwater regulations that were, that may have been previously passed retroactive to August 2024. To my knowledge, or from what I understand, New Smyrna Beach and Edgewater have already sent a letter to our governor, and I'm wondering if you guys are willing, would you be willing to have staff send a letter in opposition of Senate Bill 108?
I'm with you on that one.
Okay.
I'm with you, however, I'm good with it, but just know that these bills passed the House and the Senate with only one nay. So, I just don't know if the governor's going to, I'm willing to do it as a try, but I just have a feeling that this bill's going through.
Correct. I know it's a very, very slim possibility, but I think it, we stand for, you know, he'll know what we stand for.
Absolutely.
All right. Well, I will end that, since I've talked a lot, I just want to remind everyone, this is still Mental Health Awareness Month. I had a big thing to say, but, you know, if anybody is struggling, please reach out to someone else and know that you are worthwhile, and someone loves you. Good night.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Commissioner Sargent?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to be kind of long tonight, but I would like to say congratulations to the Ormond Beach Leadership Class 21. I also was able to attend their graduation, as my company was a sponsor of that, so I went with my company, not as a commissioner. I would like to ask of my commission, as we are policymakers up here, at the last commission meeting, I think there was some confusion, or I just want to clear some things up, and I kind of want to propose something. Two of the commissioners on the dais were afforded the opportunity to make comments to, during audience remarks. When I asked, I was denied that privilege to ask someone comments and had to wait until closing comments. That's okay. I would like to ask my commission if they would be okay with amending Resolution 2022-153. I would like to ask my commission if they would be okay with amending Resolution 2022-153. Wait a second here. Five A, I think is where we could alter this, and, and the City Attorney Randy Hayes can assist me with this, but I would like to change and add something that, with a majority consensus from the commission, we can address the public during audience remarks. I think that's the correct place to change that. Is it? City Attorney?
Let me look very quickly.
It's on page eight of our, that resolution.
Okay. Let's see here.
Eight A is under audience remarks.
There may be, let's see, let me take a quick look here. There may be one other place, and I don't, I can't put my finger on it just yet. But yeah, if there's a desire to amend the rules, I can, I can do that and bring it, bring it back in the form of an amendment to the resolution to clarify that. If that's your, your desire.
Is there anyone else on the dais that would be willing to have this amended?
I would like to look at that. There are many times there's a lot, residents up here that deserve a comment or I would like to question, so if City Attorney could bring it back, I would love that.
Excuse us one second here. We're just gonna pause. A quick recess, I'm sorry. Okay, any other further discussion here? No?
No.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, aye. All those opposed, say nay. All right, motion carries. Three, and let the record reflect that Kristin Deaton stepped out for the night, and Howard Riley stepped away for a moment. And you can continue. Commissioner Sargent?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Last week, Tuesday, May 13th, my family and I were able to, we went up on Sunday to attend the 37th Annual Candlelight Vigil in DC for the National Law Enforcement Officers. And we had eight officers that participated the ride from Virginia to DC and ends at the memorial. And previously, it was just our chief that did this ride, and now it's grown to Officer Summerlot, who's taken the, the lead on this. He's organized the car show and some other fundraisers, so that they could, could fund the, the cost of this. And it was also nice, this was the first year that their wives were able to attend, so it was nice to see all them up there. My oldest son Everett, who's 10, went to the vigil with me. The weather was horrible. It was windy and rainy, not, not a good night to have a candlelight. I'll, I'll say that, but it was very impactful, if you will, to be on the lawn in Washington DC with the cap in the background, and you have all these law enforcement officers from around the US paying tribute to the fallen. And I think we had, there was almost 300 and, 300-plus names that they read, and it's very impactful. And I know when I walked up, as they were riding their bikes and on, on that, on Monday, and you see little kids sit there that lost their mom and dad, you know, it's very, it's touching, you know, when you see someone there. So that was a great event. It was, like I said, it was great to see the wives attend. I would like to hit on a couple items. Memorial Day Remembrance Ceremony will be at, as the City Manager said, Monday, May 26th, 9:00 AM at Rockefeller Gardens. I encourage everyone to come out. This is where we pay tribute to those that passed away in the line of service to our country. All we, the least we should be able to do is show up to remember them, and then we can go to our barbecues and have fun or do whatever, but this is something that's very important, that we should remember those that fought for our freedoms, to sit in here and maybe agree to disagree. But it's these men and women that paid that way. We need to remember that. Saturday, June 14th, fishing tournament for the kids. This one's gonna be at Neptune and Ocean Shore, and Ike Leary provides the fishing poles and the bait. That's why I'm very passionate about his name being on the building for what he does for our community. He cooks hot dogs for all the kids and families that are out there, provides sodas and waters. That's why I'm very passionate about that. Again, that is Saturday, June 14th. There is no cost. It's for kids four to 12 years old. And they give out trophies, and I don't think, actually, I think my kids did win that event last year. There's one on that we didn't win, like, maybe it's the Central Park Joyce. Well, we need to stock that better, because that's one that we haven't been able to win.
Caroline won it once.
Did she? Yeah. And, you know, I heard a comment tonight about how Ormond Beach has grown so much, and
0.4%.
On May 16th, Orm, the Daytona Beach News Journal, News Census estimates Palm Coast, Daytona Beach grew faster, fastest in Volusia Flagler in 2024. Deltona tops 100,000 for the first time. What's interesting to me, Deland tops Ormond Beach for the first time since 1960. Ormond Beach's growth rate in 2024 was just 0.7%. With that, I'll say good night.
Thank you. We're gonna skip over Commissioner Deaton, that she had, means she had to step out early, and we're gonna go right to Commissioner Riley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So piggyback on Mr. Sargent's discussion about growth, population growth. TPO meeting about two weeks ago, we discussed the, well, there's a presentation about road impacts, where they, where they project a lot of growth. Palm Coast, the projected growth between 2015 and 2050, I believe, was somewhere around 140%. And I just thought, wow. That's a lot of people, a lot of growth in a 35-year period. I'll start off with congratulations to the Ormond Brewery for winning Ormond Brewery Week. Fantastic. Now, unfortunately, that was one of the burgers I didn't get to try, but apparently it must've been pretty good, because they won.
Commissioner, they are offering it for another two weeks, though.
Oh, the same burger?
Yes.
Very good.
Same price, too. Same price, by the way.
Oh, wow. Very good. My only other comment tonight, and I'm, I'm glad Ms. Bo back came this evening. I'm glad she's still here. And this is probably something we need to discuss in the future, and Stephen, this is by no means, you know, the, the fault of planning or anyone else. But when I look at this proposed gas station at the corner of Hand Avenue and Nova Road, that is the only gas station I know of, with maybe the exception of the Sunoco Station at US1 in Granada. Want a beachside? Okay. That's really that close to residential development. Most of our gas stations don't back up to residential development. This one hits home even a little harder, because it's so close to Central Park. And I believe you also have a couple, are there a couple pump stations on Division down there? I know there's one, if not two. I don't know if they're well points, pump stations, something, but they're all on the side of, I'm sorry?
Wells.
Wells. And I don't like the idea of having fuel storage tanks that close to drinking water wells and an Environmental Discovery Center. If this was a fuel farm, we'd probably have the same conversation, in my opinion. Gas stations are many fuel farms. My bigger concern is, we all know that when gas stations close, they never reopen. And the reason is, it's cheaper to go build a new gas station than it is to take care of the environmental damage caused by an existing gas station. So I'm hoping that, I know that it's moved down the road, and our, our current land development code and zoning allowed for it. I still wish there were a way to stop this one for those reasons listed. Proximity to residences, proximity to drinking wells, proximity to an environmental park. Because again, I don't know where they've come in 30, 40 years as far as how safe these underground fuel storage tanks are for gas pumps. I know they went from, I think, one time from steel to fiberglass. But again, I still think there's a potential for pretty big negative impacts. But not only just looking at this particular site, if we can go back in, 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 you know, the zoning maps and look at other areas where this, the same type of activity could happen, and we may wanna look at changing the code where maybe it's a special exception, instead of the ability just to go through administrative process. So that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Riley. So I saw an email, and I think some of the commission here probably might have received the email, I'm not sure. And I think it was actually spoken about tonight, about the road that runs behind, I'm sorry, just trying to pull up all my notes here now. The greatness of going last year. Atlantic Road, which is behind Racetrack, yeah, Sean, could you comment on that a little bit?
Yes, that was the one that Ms. Craft was up earlier, she was mentioning. And I apologize, I had left her her message, but it must've been late in the, too late in the afternoon. I'll reach out to her tomorrow. The, Atlantic Road is a little bit of a, of an oddball here. It is not technically a road. It is kind of an extension of the parking lot of Racetrack. It's, it's, I think half of it is on the Racetrack property, half of it's on the property to the north of it. We've, we've, we've called, we've talked to the Racetrack owners on various occasions. They've had different times throughout history where they've gone out there and put Band-Aids on it. They haven't done anything near what we would do to repair a roadway. They, they've put the bare minimum on it. It is in pretty bad shape. We're working with code enforcement, neighborhood improvement right now, to try and get something to it. Atlantic Road could be a potentially very important road for us. As, as we're getting the I-95 interchange, that could provide a connection to, to Plantation Oaks Boulevard and a lot of people who are, for development that may occur further to the west, to, to be able to access that light. So we are very interested in it. We, we are trying to get them to. Being that it is, it is a private property that's owned by an out-of-state entity, it's a little bit of a challenge, but that doesn't mean we're, we're giving up on it and trying to do it. We've discussed some different options of how we can make it so that it's not as dangerous for, for our residents, that, that being almost a failsafe before making, of what we can do to make it safe. So we're discussing that internally and trying to work, work with both property owners to try and make it something that, that is, is, I think, what it's expected to be by the residents who, who utilize it. I know I've utilized it. Coming out of that racetrack, it, the easiest way to come back into town is to go back around through there, go to the light-up Plantation Oaks Boulevard. It's almost to the point now where, where it is an obstacle, of course. So we're very aware of it. We've been working with them. This is one that's a little bit out of our, out of our control, because, because it's not a public roadway. We can't go on to that private, that private property and make those improvements, so. But, but we will continue to work on it and continue, like I said, if not make it safe, or make it less dangerous, if that makes sense.
To give you a little, to give you a little background on that.
Okay.
In my experience, I used to work for Volusia County Government, and that used to all be Volusia County Government up there. That was all unincorporated county. And we did not even maintain Atlantic Road. We would maintain a little bit of it, and then the rest of it was in county maintenance. So it's private property, and the problem the city or the county would have going in there and doing something like that is, number one, you assume maintenance of the roadway after you do it, which means the taxpayers now have to pay for it and continue to maintain it. And then you also accept any liability after you've approved the roadway. So leaving it the way it is, and I think there's an, I thought I saw an in-city maintenance sign up there in the video.
I, I believe so, yes, and, and that, that
And that no ties to public, that it's no longer city's maintenance. So whoever the private property owner that owns that road, now here's the thing. Whoever owns the road, they could decide they're not gonna do anything and just put a, put some sort of fence up or, and just stop access. If it's private, if it's private property.
That was gonna be my question, is that, can the property owner even do that?
Yes.
The property owner can entirely do that. They could, they could run a fence down the middle of the road, being that, on their north property line, and I don't think that we want to, to get to that point. So we're, we're trying to work with, with, with the context that we have to, to, to make sure that
And I'm all for improving the road, just not a taxpayer expense, and, and nor, nor our liability.
Randy?
Yes, I hesitate to jump into this for obvious reasons. It is privately owned, so governments are generally prohibited from using public money, these public resources, to make improvements to, 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 to private property, unless there's a primary, underlying primary public benefit to that. Now, you could make an argument both ways on this. To be clear, in my opinion, it is a liability issue for the property owners on either side of the divide. A question, and we've had this internal discussion for city staff, is whether there's, whether it would serve a public purpose for the city to acquire that and expend the funds to improve that. And I think, I think Sean has described some of those, I think, which would serve as a, as a good basis for that. In terms of whether or not the property owners could just section it off, if they needed to do that on a temporary basis in order to make corrective repairs, yeah, maybe so. I think they would have a difficult time permanently prohibiting people to access it, because it's been made available for so many years, and there's different types of equitable easements that can be claimed through litigation, of course.
That was gonna be one of my questions, is that, is that considered an easement?
Well, I mean, there's lots of different theories about, that you could get there. But it would involve a confrontation and conflict, and, and those, those types of situations, there's never a good solution. We know what the problem is, and I think the staff's trying to work on a solution. It's gonna involve a participation by the property owners, and I think once they have something in hand, there's a way that we can make that happen. If the city determines through your decision-making here that it's appropriate for the commission to acquire that property, then we can, we can, we can do that. We can make that, but it's not gonna be a quick fix. In the meantime, the Band-Aid approach is gonna have to work, and maybe that, through code enforcement, that'll give them some incentive. I mean, the liability alone should give them incentive, so. But anyway, that's my two cents worth.
Thank you, Randy. So I guess in the meantime, we'll just let code enforcement kinda work its magic and hope that, hopefully it'll, it'll correct itself, or at least put the, you know, put the pressure on the property owner to, to do something about it. Well, thank you for that. Also like to thank the Burger Week participants, everybody that participated in it. It was definitely a lot of work for the restaurants, but a lot of them did very well. Some of the feedback was that, there was people I didn't even know that some of the restaurants even offered burgers, and actually the winner, who was Ormond Brewery, that, some people actually said, I read some comments online that they didn't even know that they offered food. So these are the type of benefits that really work well. So congrats to all the individuals that were involved, and they did a fantastic job. Sorry, I just, when you go last, this is some of the things you have to go with. There was a proclamation that I read. There was a proclamation that I read on, last week, for nursing, to recognize nursing, so that was a really nice get-together, and I don't know if anybody from the commission came, but we had some first responders that came out. I think some of you got the invite on it, and the residents were really happy about it, so I was really pleased to be out there for that event as well. I'd like to also, again, thank the residents that came out and spoke tonight. I know it's, you know, it's a lot to ask for, especially for some of the older folks to come out at 7 o'clock at night to speak on record, but I think that we all, I'd like to thank the commission here, listening to the residents and seeing what we can try to do to at least find out some information about the future use of Riverbend Golf Course. Other than that, I will...
Sorry, Mr. Mayor, I'd just be remiss, one thing I forgot in my closing comments. May is also ALS Awareness Month, and I believe you presented, you prepared a proclamation, which is on the city's website?
Yes, I did prepare a proclamation, and I think that there might be somebody who will accept the proclamation.
I got an email late this afternoon from Mr. Burkett, who actually requested the proclamation. He said unfortunately, no one's going to be able to be here to accept a proclamation, but he just wanted to thank the city commission for the proclamation, so just wanted to pass that along.
Okay, well, great, I appreciate the information on that one. Other than that, though, I'm going to close out tonight, and thank you, everyone, for that came out tonight.